Hey, good evening, everyone. I'd like to open tonight's regular select board meeting. It is this, uh, December. It is November 17th, 2021, and this is a regular select board meeting, number one. The time is, uh, 6:34 PM. Very cute. All right, um, meetings will fall to order. Any particular changes to the agenda at this time? I am going to move up, uh, item 8B on the appointment of, uh, our DV fiber, Mr. Donald Demain. Hi, Donald, um, welcome to our select board meeting via Zoom.
Hello. Thank you.
And Peter, I'll spell names shortly for you. Okay, right now in the room, we have Mr. Guy Tanser, a videographer and counselor, Mr. Mark Bills, who is our road supervisor, Gwen, uh, what's your last name, Tansa, uh, Stan Doga. We used to have Bruce Mello, but he's gone somewhere, and myself, Dot Maggio, here in the select board office. Okay, um, all right. At this point, we'll take a review and approve the minutes from the regular meeting on November 3rd, 2021. And we'll start with page, we'll start with page 1 of 8. Any changes on page 1? Hearing none, we'll move on to page 2, draft minutes from November 3rd. Any changes on page 2? Yes? Bruce?
Page 2, R E M C appointee.
Yeah.
Date shouldn't be the 16th, it should be the 17th.
The 16th is when the meeting was. I went to the meeting last night.
Oh, is that what, okay, sorry.
Yeah, so the date's fine.
Okay. Sorry.
Page 3.
Actually, Dot, sorry, on page 2, under that same R E M C appointee section, the last sentence there, Peter, you're just missing the E off of Mr. Fontaine's name in the last sentence.
Thank you.
Just that. Thanks.
Anything else on page 2? Page 3? Okay, we'll move on to page 4. Nothing here. Yes, sir?
Second to last paragraph.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's called Nemrec, isn't it? It's not Nemrec.
Nemrec, N-E-M.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, uh, the last, the word is N as in Nancy. E-M-R-C. Thank you, I didn't notice that.
Word.
Yeah.
Okay, page 5. Page 6. Guy Tanser, what are you Asian, because not looking at you. Dot, what's that, Bruce?
5, it's down to C.
ARPA meeting?
Uh, maybe the last sentence. State FEMA rep, what does that mean?
Oh, the state FEMA representative insisted had provided contact information. S-T-A-T-E. So the word state before the word FEMA was just misspelled. Page 6.
Yep, no one for you.
Okay.
Um, down at Brookline Church, you go, call it the meeting house. Three dot I's, and it says, hold on, bear with me a second. "Mr. Mello read from, quote, 'a quote for bat removal and exclusion noted that the problem hadn't been resolved at a cost of $7,000.'" No, that's not correct. It should have been, I think it was $2,300 when we had the, when we had, and it was just a cleanup of the bat guano for $2,300. Then it says that the price quoted was $5,000. I'm not reading through the sheet, but.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so you're saying that the, uh, original cost of bat removal and cleanup was not $7,000?
No, just, just, just cleanup. There was no bat removal first time.
Okay, so the original cost of.
For bat, uh, for bat guano removal, we want to, was fifth, was, I think it was $2,300. That price was, it wasn't $7,000.
I'm totally lost, where are we?
We are on page 6, um, under Town Building Commissioner Bruce Mello. Not the daycare, not town building, the Brookline Meeting House, where it says bats in the bell free.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mello read from a quote for bat removal and exclusion, noted that the problem had not been resolved in the past. Should we just, if we don't know the exact amount, I don't want to requote it.
Well, it was $7,000, and it wasn't bat removal, it was bat guano.
All right, so we're going to change that sentence. So Mr. Mello read from a quote from bat removal and exclusion, noted that the problem had not been resolved.
No. "Mr. Mello read from a quote for bat."
Guano removal.
Guano removal, and noted that the problem hadn't been resolved at a cost of $2,300.
You sure that amount now?
Uh, pretty, pretty sure.
For approximately $2,300?
And then it says, I have to think, it says that the price quoted was seven, was $5,000, which is accurate.
Okay.
That's the quote that was given by that company.
Okay.
So, uh, a quote for bat guano removal.
Was approximately.
No, no, no. He's getting confused, I'm sorry, Peter. Uh, this is a mess.
I can do it, I can.
Okay, go ahead.
"Mr. Mello read, read from a quote for bat guano removal and noted that the problem had not been resolved. That cost approximately was $2,300, period." The price quoted recently, you know the name of the company?
Oh, God, I'll read. Wild something, uh. I've got a Scott, uh. Is it not a board?
The, the price quoted by the exterminator was $5,000, which did not include two lift rentals.
That's five, five hundred.
Can I offer another suggestion? Just, I'm, I'm not sure what's intended. I, I think Bruce was indicating that, uh, Mr. Mello read from a quote for bat removal and exclusion,
For $5,000.
That the price quoted was $5,000, not including two lift rentals. The concept of work previously having been done for $2,300 pertains only to the removal of bat guano and not the exclusion of the bats.
Correct.
So, it may be what the thing to do is just to take, uh, the phrase, "noted that the problem had not been resolved."
Had a cost of $7,000, and we just remove that?
No, no, just, uh, they, they, it's, it was a, probably, it's a mix of things. There, there was, there is a bat guano, was a bat guano problem, and the intent of the bid was only for removal of the guano, and it was about a $2,300 amount, couple, three, several years ago?
Yes.
Okay. The, the, the quote that Bruce was reading from at the last regular meeting was from a gentleman who was asked to provide a quote for guano removal and elimination of the bat problem by plugging holes, and his estimate was $5,000, that did not include two lift rentals.
Which are $700.
So, however we wish to structure that, it would almost seem to make this not confusing is to just delete from that sentence or move to a sentence after the phrase, "noted that the problem had not been resolved at a cost of $2,300 roughly."
How's that, Peter?
Is that, is there a way you can phrase that that makes sense?
Uh, okay, I now understand that the bat guano removal previously had not been resolved, and it has nothing to, nothing to do with the present situation, which is that somebody has quoted, uh, a bat exclusion for $5,000.
That's correct.
So, read from a quote for, uh, bat removal and exclusion, for $5,000, not including two lift rentals at $705 a day. And just leave out the old, uh, problem.
Yeah.
What's that got, what's it got to do with anything?
Yeah.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I'm, I've, I got completely lost at the beginning there. There was something on page 1 which, uh, I never heard.
No, I don't think there was anything on page 1.
Okay, then there was Nemrec. And I can't find that.
Nemrec is on page 4.
Second to last paragraph.
Close to the end of the second set, the last two sentences.
Oh, it says, oh, it uses an M, I got it. Okay, that's corrected. And the next one was, uh, page 4, again?
No.
Or page 5? Okay, there was a misspelling on page 5, so what was that?
Under ARPA webinar, you spelled the word state wrong in front of FEMA. State, S, you wrote S-A-T-E in it.
So last sentence.
Last sentence in ARPA.
Oh, that's a state, I got it, okay. That's actually down on page 6 by that time. Okay.
Did you get the spelling correction that David mentioned with Fontaine needing an E?
I did.
Okay, I got it all.
Okay, Fontaine.
Okay, I apologize, there we go.
All right, uh, next page, uh, is page 7, under draft minutes. We're on page 87. Move to page 8. Any other changes there? If not, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the November 17th, 2021 Brookline Select Board Meeting as amended.
Wouldn't be November 17th, that's today.
November 17th. Select Board Meeting, uh, as amended.
November 3rd.
November 3rd. Sorry, I got the look of the wrong date again. November 3rd, 2021, Select Board Meeting Minutes as amended.
It's okay, you got that. It's a minor mistake, and I, I made a mistake for, for my version.
All right. All right, very good.
I think we should all meditate for a minute.
Yes. Let's take a look at the minutes from the special meeting on November 10th. The only thing I'm not exactly sure was.
Hang on, Dot, Dot, we didn't, no one seconded the motion, and we didn't vote on it.
Seconded.
Seconded by Stan Doga, any discussion? Thank you, David. Hearing none, all those in favor of, notify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstain? All right, thanks. Keeps me on track. All right, Wednesday, November 10th, Special Select Board Budget Meeting. And the only correction that I, I wasn't exactly sure in my handwriting what time the meeting was adjourned at. So I put 8:30, it may have been 8:25. I'm sorry, I put 8:30, because, okay. All right, and it changes to this, to this set of minutes that I typed up. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the November 10th Special Budget Meeting Minutes as presented signify by.
Need a motion?
I need a motion, I'm making a motion to accept the minutes.
Set, I mean.
Setted by Gwen, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving these minutes as written, signify by saying aye.
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 Right, the minutes were accepted, thank you very much. Um, scheduled members of the public. All right, I'd like to introduce you all to the gentleman in the lower left-hand corner of our Zoom page. This is Mr. Donald Demain. Donald, welcome to the Brookline, uh, Select Board Meeting tonight. I'm glad you could make it.
Thank you.
Um, Donald has contacted, has been interested in following through with, uh, with the DV fiber, Deerthrough Valley Network Communications Union, and, uh, Donald, you and I spoke on the phone, but maybe you can tell everyone else about your computer, um, interests and such?
Sure, um, so I, um, came up here, um, February of this year to help out, uh, with my mother-in-law, um, Marge Walsh, who I'm sure some of you know, um, and, um, sold the house in Connecticut. Um, so we're here, um, and, um, you know, I've, I've been involved in Boy Scouts and Masons and, you know, various other community activities my whole life, and, um, just, you know, came up here and was kind of looking around. Uh, I'm a tech guy by trade. Um, I work on computers primarily at this point, servers and, um, uh, cloud-based stuff, um, but definitely, you know, 30-plus years of experience there. And so I figured, uh, bringing fiber to the underserved community, especially, um, you know, impacting the youth who, uh, you know, if you don't have access to information, it makes it hard to keep up. Um, so I feel that that's a, a project that I could, um, probably add some value to, um, certainly hope to, um, and kind of in line with my, my trade, so I think that makes a lot of sense. So that's me.
Well, we really appreciate you stepping up and, and offering your services and, and knowledge to represent Brookline during this process. Uh, as you know, or maybe you're aware, that the Phase 1 does not include uh, expanding anything in Brookline, but Phase 2 does include it. And, uh, you know, between you and Marjorie, if you could support the efforts that might, um, come to Brookline, that would be fantastic, I think that would be much appreciated. Anytime that you feel that you would like to have a moment or two to speak with the select board during any meeting, send me an email, and I can put you on the agenda. And when we have, uh, scheduled members of the public, we put them on sort of early so that you don't have to hang out the whole meeting. But you are welcome to hang out for the whole meeting. Um, what I'm going to do now is, um, I'd like to nominate the appointment of Representative Donald Demain to be the alternate for DV fiber for the town of Brookline. Can I have a second on it?
Sure, second.
Seconded by Bruce. Any discussion? Only discussion is to say thank you again. Uh, I do have your email address and your phone number, which I will be passing along. I have the paperwork here that I'll, that I will send in. All right, um, all those in favor of appointing Mr. Donald Demain as our, uh, alternate representative to DV fiber signify by saying aye.
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 All right, thank you very much, Donald.
Thank you, Donald.
Thank you, Donald.
You're welcome.
Thanks very much, we appreciate it.
Hey, no problem. I think, I think I'll hang out for a little while just to kind of see what's, you know, happening in the community.
Sure, you're very, you're very welcome.
All right.
All right.
Sorry, was there a second, I didn't get that?
Chris Mello, second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, uh, now we're going to move into, no members have unscheduled members. Now we're going to move into old business review and discuss and finalize the road supervisor's job description. So this afternoon, we got, um, an email, the, um, highlighted job description for the, uh, road supervisor with different color edits on it, and I looked through it and, um, I thought it was, uh, well, well-reviewed, and, um, I just wanted to ask if there was anybody who sees any reason to add or delete anything else before this, I ask for approval from you.
We had to get your attention.
Stan?
Yeah, I, in reviewing the, uh, the minutes of November 3rd, I noted that one of the things that you had referenced was photos of road issues before and after. I did not include that in the description, but, so if you wish to make that modification, you can, it's a simple one.
Actually, what, we, we've been doing that already, so.
Okay.
It's part of the regular maintenance, and I wasn't, that's part of the regular maintenance of it. So it goes, that goes, it's understood that that's part of it.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Gwen, or any questions or changes?
No.
Okay, Bruce?
My only two things is, is asked if one's ready.
Well, Mark hasn't read.
No, I haven't.
So we're not going to put up a quote yet.
Okay, um, I'm going to table this for right now, and, um, I can edit to the special meeting to quickly review this at the beginning of our meeting on, officially. No, we can do it December 1st.
December 1st.
Is that all right with you?
Yeah.
All right.
Sounds good.
So what I'm going to ask.
So you're giving him a copy?
I'm going to give him a copy.
It was emailed this afternoon with everyone else, so.
Even that, I'm here. I can't open.
Oh, is that me that I can't open? Okay. Do you want me to print out a copy while you're here?
Yeah, I'll give him my copy.
All right.
And then I can send in another one.
Sounds good.
I have a second maybe suggestion. When we discuss this at the first, then we do an executive session, because it involves his position. I think we should consider, should consider doing that.
I'll check, I don't know if it qualifies.
Yeah, I don't know if it qualifies.
Because it's the job description, yeah, it's not an evaluation.
Okay, that's true, it isn't.
Right.
Okay. All right, maybe I'm jumping like I'm a little far.
Okay. All right, so I will put that on the, uh, December 1st. If I can have a clean copy of that, if you don't mind, we'll take out all the edit markings, and, um, and, um, then we can, um, vote to, uh, approve.
Uh, I have one request. Uh, David is very thorough and he's knowledgeable, and I think when he originally started to correct this, he put it into a comparative review process, and I am uncertain how to, how to take that out so that when, I don't know if you noticed, the one that I emailed, you probably, I haven't had a chance to look at it. But I think because of the review aspect of it, if you look on the right side of each of the pages, you're going to see this gray area, which I think has, uh, which is a place for the adjustments to be made. At one point in here, there is a point where, uh, page, the second page, where it indicated a format change, and David had made a comment somewhere, uh, and so forth, it didn't appear in this printout here, but, um, if, David, if I could ask your assistance?
Sure.
And the one that I sent you to take that out, so I can change it to all one for that. Appreciate that, thank you.
Sure, yeah, I can do that, based on the, so the one you sent this afternoon is the, as far as you're concerned, the final version, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, so I can.
Interchange.
Sure, so I can go through and just clean up the, get rid of the track changes and accept them all, and then I'll send the final, final one around to everybody after that.
Great, great, thank you.
In advance of the next meeting, sure.
All right, thanks, David, much appreciated. All right, wield excavator purchase discussion and loan information. All right, so, um, what, what is the, where's the select board office situation, um, as far as purchasing and actually going out and, and, and getting ready to have something for the spring? I am, I'll, I'll tell you where I'm at. I am at a point where I'm going, we're going to be meeting with the FEMA representative on Friday. There is some road work from the flood that has not been done yet and needs to be done. I'm going to ask the FEMA rep about renting the equipment to get that work done, and that work should be covered under the FEMA reimbursement. So we might have a tractor, we could talk about when, and we'll talk about that Friday with FEMA, when we can get some of the final work done, and we need a big piece of equipment to finish up moving things around. So, we may have a, the vehicle here anyway, and if there is a chance that we could purchase, lease with the option of purchasing after the FEMA cleanup, that would be an economical way to go, and I was just wondering how we want to proceed. Go ahead.
How much work are you looking at?
We haven't finished the disaster inventory yet. We are, just started last week, we worked on it, and FEMA man's coming every Friday.
So even if it's a week or two weeks or whatever it is, and we, if you'll agree to us leasing it, that would come out of FEMA money, at least part of it.
Part of it.
Uh, we could start the process, and we could lock in something, and then, then I defer to the numbers, because I don't know what the road, road fund looks like there. I haven't, I haven't really studied it yet, because we scheduled that for the, uh, the 8th, and, um, it's a big deal, I mean, that's a big discussion, so. You know me. I'll, I'll have to say here, yesterday, I think it's a really valuable thing for the town and for Mark, but we got to work it out long term, I mean, that's just.
Okay.
And, and I don't think we can really do that until we get our budget printed out.
I, I agree, I agree.
Which is going to happen for your little thing?
But, um, are we, would you all be on the same page if I did talk to FEMA about renting the equipment again to get the disaster work done, and then maybe using that as our, our jumpboard to actually keeping something here in town after the fact? Do you understand what I mean, David?
Well, I, I sort of do, so what is the work that we still need to complete, that we're going to complete yet this season?
No, not this season.
Well, so there's, so there's a big part of my question. So, does it, A, until the FEMA process has run its course, unless, I mean, maybe, maybe this is, maybe you've been guaranteed by the person that we're going to get all of the 80% or 75% or whatever it is of all of this cost back. But until that has, until we've at least submitted all of that, and we know with clarity how much money we are going to have coming back to us, and therefore, how much money we have physically, um, I don't know why we would even contemplate getting into a long-term lease arrangement until we know all of that. Secondarily, I'm not sure why we would get into a long-term lease arrangement in November. Um, so.
November, no. I was thinking more or less, we're looking at, well, it depends upon the weather. I'm figuring March, April, but I know April we can put in for a loan through the municipal loan program, and April they have to have that in, so. I, and we won't know from FEMA, our, our case is not going to be closed until January 10th or 11th. And that's when all of our, all of our, uh, billing has to be into FEMA. And then, anytime after that, we do have 18 months to do the repair work. Any, any final repair work from FEMA.
Did you receive a response, uh, from, from Yonkers? Yes, and he said he was, uh, he was on holiday, and, uh, he asked me to call him back, and I haven't had the chance, to be honest with you, I've been kind of busy. But I will this week again try to, and the January 11th is the date that FEMA allows us to recognize the damage. Then we have 18 months to complete the damage and repair.
To finish it. All right, so I just wanted to really keep you aware that, you know, it, it's, we have an awful lot of work to do in town, um, to meet the 2025 upgrades and ditching requirements. We have some, uh, we're going out with Mark and, and Guy looking at the culverts, and there's, there's a lot of, uh, upgrades that need to be done. And of course, we could, you know, sub, uh, we could lease our, subcontract everything to a, an outside party, but, uh, I think it would be best that we, you know, really keep this going.
Control room, best to me.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so I do have the original wield excavator, uh, uh, request for a proposal or bid from previous years. There's not much else then to talk about, um, and the loan information, we have some of that as well. Initial loan information that Stan got for us with the comparative research. Just, just want people to make sure they're reading everything so that everybody's on the same page and knows what's going on. Okay, so, wield of es- excavator. Okay, so wield of es- excavator, when do you want to see this on get on the agenda?
You said you're meeting with FEMA this week.
Right, so I'm I'm thinking.
What kind of answer you're gonna give?
Well, yeah, well, we have to get the okay from FEMA to see if it fits in there.
And whether it's gonna be issued, so I'm I'm guessing February at the latest. We really need to start February and March if we're gonna apply for a loan for April.
Um. Certainly know well before then from FEMA, that's for sure.
Okay.
With the final final date.
FEMA, alright, FEMA FEMA gave us a and again, he said, you can't quote me, but he thought that we would probably receive our funds within about six months. And he uh for the for the uh event.
Is it July twenty-ninth?
And again, because they're they're kind of moving this right along.
Right.
Uh, and as long as we get our ducks in order and submit all the information that he's requiring, um, he said he thought that with six months would be an appropriate window of opportunity to get our funds.
Bruce is mentioning that we both went to a FEMA workshop and they said we might be able to be reimbursed before the end of the year. That was before FEMA has decided to send people in person again. And so we have a person that comes to town from Burlington every Friday now for the next sixty days to work with us on the paperwork and they're also going to do site inspections. They were gonna do it all digitally, now they're going to physically come, so that's why it's gonna take six months and not three months.
So who are those two people that we met with that that you, are they FEMA?
Kim is Kim that she is the she she's the one that runs the uh, she's not.
Yeah, Mel is from the FEMA, federal FEMA.
Right.
Richard is from the state, though.
Right.
What happens is that FEMA funnels the money to the state, the state funnels it to the communities.
And Kim is the in-between person, she actually uh make sure that the she knows all the rules of regs and so she coordinates between state and federal. Yes, sir.
Where where does this meeting occur?
In this room.
Is is there a specific time designated?
What do you mean?
Uh, well, we start ten o'clock, cause he comes from Burlington, it's almost a three-hour trip.
Ten o'clock.
So he starts at ten and we'd like to finish by two or three, so he could get back up to Burlington.
Is the meeting open to select board members if they wish to attend or is it closed?
Well, anybody, it's a it's basically a workshop for us to we have to get the coordinates, the latitude and longitude of each event. Uh, we have to review what went in it, the dimensions of it, it's basically um.
I'll just annoy that is are there other people who can attend if they wish?
I guess anybody can attend, but basically Dot and I are the um
Sliders.
The the people representing Brookline in this particular event.
Right.
And uh we're the ones that have been assigned the the different things, but.
I I understand that.
Yeah.
And I and I welcome that, I think it's a great, I think it's a good answer.
Yeah.
I I would just like to partake in sitting and just watching.
Yeah, there's no doubt.
That's all about, I guess it was a, that's a simple question for me to ask and ask it, and thank you very much.
No, all meetings are open, I mean, you know.
Now, we we, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Uh, at the last meeting, I think I had offered similar opinions to those that were expressed by David. And and I haven't, I haven't, I I'm wondering where the picking up and carrying the ball regarding how much money will are we gonna be saving with these outside vendors not being used because we have equipment? And the offset, the trade-off of what the payments are. I I would like to see some numbers and I mentioned even a committee possibly being formed to do that. That hasn't been mentioned and that, so I'm wondering is is the idea of analyzing this not a good idea? Or do people just wanna jump in and 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 get something done?
Well, no, the analyzing is is a little difficult because it's a dynamic number. We put thirty-nine thousand dollars a year into a a line item on the um highway budget. But that thirty-nine thousand dollars is basically for vendors like Car Tree Service, Archie Clark.
Yeah, I know that story.
Do that. And basically, having our own machine, we could cut down the amount of the thirty-nine thousand dollars owning our own equipment. Thirty-nine thousand dollars is still gonna be there because we still have to pay for the equipment and so forth, but it would be less than the thirty-nine thousand dollars by owning a piece of equipment. And having it, the most important thing is the emergencies and having the ability to respond immediately because we got lucky with Archie. Uh, if he had not responded, we'd still have ditches up there because everybody else was busy.
I I understand that, I understand the last budget meeting, you specifically indicated that we need to look at that seasonal budget because there's there are things that uh this would not cover. Like, we we don't have a dump truck with a plow.
Right.
We so we can't carry materials back into a site even though we have equipment to put it on, but we don't have the equipment to do the plow. So there's a portion that we're still gonna spend.
Oh, yeah.
And there's a portion that uh we're gonna by purchasing s- equipment not have to pay someone else but for an asset of the town. I guess what I'm asking for is is it anyone's concern that we have the numbers for those kinds of decisions? I don't, we're not talking about getting those numbers.
I submitted a paper to David and I thought I sent it to everybody last year's uh numbers of that thirty-nine thousand dollars in detail, what we spent and how we spent it.
They weren't on the board.
Oh, okay, that explains it.
No, but I just. No, 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 he's talking about, Guy's talking about something he sent us a couple of weeks ago. He sent to all of us. In advance of the budget discussion, which of course, as a reminder, like Bruce pointed out, we have not yet gotten to our highway budget discussion and we're not scheduled to do that until December eighth. So it's a little hard to jump ahead to some of these things that are essentially conversations that we should be having after we've had that discussion. But what I will say about like the information that that Guy sent, this is very useful to see. However, I don't have any detail from this to know what of these things we wouldn't have had to pay for if we had had a wield excavator other than the two rentals of the wield excavator, cause I recognize the vendor, so I know I know at least some of these things were money that we actually spent on wield excavators. In fact, probably half of it was already spent on wield excavators. But you know what I mean, I mean, it it's it's great to have this information as a starting point, but somebody needs to give more detail to this, probably Mark or a combination of Mark and Archie or I'm not sure who, but.
I I'm willing to suggest that maybe two select board members might decide to meet with, you know, plan to have a roundtable with Archie, Road Commissioner and the Road Supervisor and uh, you know, start working on this so that a uh details can be worked out in in the early part of two thousand twenty-two.
And if I can add, I I I think this is not bad what you're suggesting. I totally understand what you're doing and I and there's nothing wrong with exposure, which is what you're saying.
Well, that and yes, exposure and simply understanding what what the pictures are.
I don't have any problem with that and I, but I do think I would like to see, I'd like to see that hand over there involved in it too as well because he he was great with the idea at the beginning four, three, four years ago and was his baby at the beginning, he had the right idea and the right vision and I'd like to see that included on any meeting that's involved.
I can just gather some of the data for you because I have.
Whatever you think's fine, Guy, I just want your say involved.
I think it's a great idea.
And I think the what what David and 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 Stan are saying are not obtuse, I think it's not a bad idea in the law. So G P tell there's nothing wrong with that. And I think we're all gonna come to the same conclusion equally.
Well. Yeah, I I wanna I wanna possibly echo, I'm not gonna speak for Stan, but I have a feeling Stan may be sensing some of the same thing, which is I am willing and I'm sure Stan is willing to spend the time that we can spend to dig through the data and try to come up with information about this. I'm a little concerned that other people on this board have already made up their mind somewhat regardless of what information we come up with. So I'll just say, I don't want to spend a lot of time doing.
Setting your rules, yeah.
Exactly, coming up with information which might not uh agree with the view that some other people have already formed. So I just throw that out there. And the other thing I'll say is that Stan and I don't have access to most of the information that's necessary for this. So it isn't just us and it isn't even just Mark. I mean, Mark wouldn't, in in fairness to Mark, Mark wouldn't be able to look at this report that Guy pulled and know the detail of the invoices, some of which are referenced and some of which are not. So I mean, we'll have to pull AP warrants from a year worth of time and find the underlying invoices and then discuss, okay, could that have been done? Would we not have had to have this cost if we had a wield excavator or would we blah blah blah? And I'll also say this is just one little portion of it. We talked about having all of this same information for the FEMA work. So that's something at at some point that I think needs to be quantified and obviously it can't be done yet because we don't have most of that information yet.
I also would like to suggest that we also look forward and look at the responsibilities and the projects that are in the future that we must meet by state regs and mandates. And that is culvert expansion, water mitigation and uh uh other other programs that are involved with uh protecting the waters and lands of the people here in not Brooklyn and in the state of Vermont. There's an awful lot of uh of of work that needs to be done and highlighted and uh when the regional is involved in it and they'll be working, coming up with some priority projects too. So we also, you look at the past, but we also must look into the future of what we anticipate because that's what we have to do is move into the future, so.
Right, I'll also add that we also need to look into the future and realize that probably next year or if not next year, the year after, if we're able to extend it, we're gonna spend hundreds of thousands of dollars building a new salt and sand shed. And our portion of that is going to be a lot of money that we have not budgeted for as a town. That there there are other significant highway expenditures that are gonna have to be factored into all of this to additionally make sure that we have the money to be able to do whatever we might choose to do.
I take on a big reaction to your comment about mine being made up. And generally, that's, I'm speaking about me, I'm not speaking about anybody else, and generally, that's true about me. But in saying that, I don't wanna hurt the town. And that's kind of what I said at the beginning in a roundabout way, which is I wanna see what the numbers look like and that's why I said about Stan saying, uh, we need to analyze it to make sure that let's put it this way, that we're all on the same page as far as what we feel as expenses are because if we need to spend fifty thousand dollars someplace and we ain't got it, it's gonna make it a little hard for us to get a down payment on it on on a wield excavator. And we've had, we've got a lot of stuff coming our way and we got a lot of stuff that's going to come away like with the infrastructure uh signing yesterday. So there's a lot of variables. Um, of course, I wanted it done yesterday, but that's that's really unrealistic. I think the idea of the first part of the year and it was get past the budget process, go into this analytical mode, we've had the road fund already analyzed and we move forward with discussions that both you had, Stan and Dot. I think we're all sound enough and smart enough people to come to a conclusion with with the right back board.
Right, but.
Thank you, that's well said and accurate, I think we all want the same thing.
Yeah, I don't wanna hurt the town, I don't wanna have a bill for a hundred thousand dollars, like I said, I'll I'll make one last statement. I'm a progressive liberal, when it comes to spending other people's money, I'm a really tight-fisted ass dog. We had that discussion the other day.
Now, I I I'm only bringing this up for the reasons that I don't wanna find myself in a situation where we're into this and finding myself saying, I I'm not gonna, I'm either gonna abstain from the vote or vote no, because I don't know what's gonna happen down the road to the benefit of the town. And I and I I don't wanna go into something with no information available to provide to the citizens and in my own mind, feeling comfortable having made a decision on done doing the right thing and justifiable so. So I that's where I'm coming, I don't need to be a wise ass or critical.
Come on, I'm not, we're all smart people, we'll work it out, just have the right attitude, get all the numbers on have the opposing, this is what democracy is about. You're not giving a flip of the lecture, we don't do that, but anyway, amen, my friend, and you're right to share.
Much appreciated that, I just, I don't know how to let something go and not talk about it and I just, I didn't wanna wait until spring to bring it up again. But I want, I don't didn't want it to be far from our our thoughts, so.
Yep.
Alright, if uh Mark and Stan and David and Guy and Archie, if you all, if there could be I know the amount of information that we had a few years ago, um, when we first approached the town with this idea was substantial and 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 uh hard to not to see clearly, so I I hopefully you can come up with similar.
And one last, we're lucky because we have a very qualified person as Road Commissioner who's been in the business for fifty years and if anybody's gonna be the devil's advocate, it's gonna be Archie Clark. So we're gonna have to have a proofs together in order to be able to react to whatever he has to say. And I think we're fit to challenge, we just have to prove that that it's worth it for the town, amen.
Alright, excellent. Alright, can we move on then?
I think so.
Thank you, we're gonna go to reports, oh, I don't know, it's only, we're really early.
So.
Bye, alright, reports, town clerk report, Mr. Guy Tans, so what's new in town?
Um, basically, things are going just as they have been for the last couple of months. It's been busy in the town all season.
Hey Dot, I'm sorry, didn't we skip over where we were gonna go go through appropriations?
Oh, excuse me, I turned the page, thank you, David.
Sure.
I turned the page too soon, bar, new business appropriations. Budget review, discussed plans for requested appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Here we go, I'm ready. Okay, alright, I emailed twice today, the updated one, I'm gonna update one more time because we received um twenty-three, actually twenty-four items for appropriations. Uh, one through twenty-two are are appropriations that have been made in the past. Um, number twenty-three, project Feed the Thousands was a general letter that came in in the time that we were accepting appropriations, it's just a general looking for funding, no amount was requested and we haven't contributed that to them for. So as we go through here, I would like to make sure that you noted that um item number three, the upcoming year, I we I do have a request for Greenup Vermont. Um, item number six, Leland and Gray Foundation, I received no requests from them. I did get the paper request for more free library, you can see that they have an increase from three hundred to seven hundred. Um, there is another increase in Senior Solutions, they went from six hundred and fifty to seven hundred. But moving down the page, the current did not send in a request this year. Valley Cares, which I called the Business Office, um, they did not send in a request this year.
Uh, excuse me, what what did you call down there?
Today.
Okay.
Sorry, perhaps you could send me that list so I don't have to try to keep up with you.
Oh, absolutely, good, good idea. Uh, Vermont Rural Fire Protection Forum Rim did not get, uh, there's no request from them this year. Um, Wyndham County Humane Society, I got their request, it's for five hundred dollars, which is the same as last year. And then the Gathering Place initially sent us a letter that said they had like to request five hundred dollars this year as they did last year. I contacted them and they apologized, it was a template letter that was sent out. It is a new request, a new appropriations request for the Gathering Place for five hundred dollars from the town of Rockaway. Um, it is not a repeat uh appropriations. Um, so how do you want, David, I haven't, I didn't do this for a couple of years, how did you do this last year?
So the Gathering Place is a new one?
The Gathering Place is a new appropriation, correct?
For five hundred.
For five hundred dollars. I uh I added it up and Glenn double-checked it. The appropriations that are repeat appropriations, including changes in prices uh donation requests totaled eighty tha- eight thousand fifty dollars. We add the five hundred dollars from the Gathering Place, it's eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Uh, okay.
Okay, so how do we uh.
We can start saying.
Yeah, which, I mean, it is the Select Board's prerogative to place the any, all, or none in front of the townspeople for their town meeting in March.
Right, and I'll just say, in recent years, in particular last year, although we can talk about the situation of last year and why it was perhaps unique in some ways. I think the opinion of most of the board, if not all the board, in, over the last few years anyway, has been that we should put the number, what people have requested, we should put forward to the voters of the town to decide. Certainly in the case of organizations that have been supported in the past, we put that forward to the voters, even if it's an increase in money. That'll be called out in some fashion, which I guess we'll have to discuss as we get closer to how we're going to warn all of these things. Usually, if there's a new request, like I guess in the case of the Gathering Place, we would normally warn that as a separate article. So it gets voted on its own. You may recall last year, because we didn't have a town meeting, we had everything voted separately because we were voting everything up or down by Australian ballot, and there was no opportunity for anyone to be able to amend a single article that contained all of the appropriations, which is historically how we've done it. Assuming that we're going to have a physical town meeting again, we could, assuming everybody wants to, we could go back to warning the appropriate, the recurring appropriations as one large article, detailed in the town report of line by line, but one article for all of them that gets voted up or down, rather than warning each of them individually.
I think we're jumping the gun. I'd say assuming that we're going to have a town meeting, wherever it's going to be there. But from what I've been observing, that Governor Scott has been in the position right now, at this point in time, of not declaring a state of emergency. Even though, even though cases have been up dramatically in the Northeast, especially Vermont. Saying that, I believe it's up to the legislature in January that they can go ahead and approve what we're talking about, a live town meeting. I would say, if I was a betting man, I'd put a few more dollars if we're not going to have a live town meeting as much as I'd like to have it.
I think we are.
I think we will.
I think so too.
Because you would have the window of opportunities so diminished, you have to send a warning out 30 or 40 days prior to the meeting at the legislative meets in January. I don't know.
Don't mind the sound with that.
Yeah, it's volatile at this point, it's really weird.
I don't know.
Right, so anyway, I guess, I guess that doesn't necessarily have to impact anything about what we're discussing tonight as far as whether we, as a board, want to alter any of these requests before presenting them to the town, or if we want to get more information from any of these organizations. The one, a couple things I will say before we continue, however we're going to continue, it concerns me that we haven't gotten any requests from some of these organizations that we've always given money to. I know that you reached out to some of them. I personally think we should give them a little bit more time to make sure we haven't either missed something or they've not just neglected to send it to us for whatever reason. Valley Cares, I mean, we always get a request from Valley Cares. And it's one of the ones that I will say I think is most ardently supported by people in town. So I think we, it would serve us to do a little bit more, give a little bit more rope to try to make sure they genuinely did not intend to send us a request before we omit it.
How about the Leland and Gray Foundation? That was something that every year we struggled with as well. Guy had to call.
Yeah, Stephen Meyer is the, was the person, the contact. And each year, it's always, you know, it's been late and for whatever reasons. But, you know, it is Leland and Gray, it's our neighbor, it's a high school that our community goes to. And it's for a good cause, it's for scholarships and so forth. I'm surprised that we haven't, I think he may have a full plate and something just, you know, like everything else, just go by the wayside until all of a sudden he realizes, whoa. So like as David said, I think it would be advantageous to contact these people because we know that they need the funding and they have, you know, historically always asked us.
Yeah, well, I picked up the phone yesterday to make up this list today. So, all right, now I have a name for Leland and Gray. Give me a phone number tomorrow and I'll call him. All right.
I could call one of them by name.
I talked to them, they said, I did, they emailed me their request for $500, I said, you have that.
The current comes up?
The current, do we know?
The current comes up this way?
Yes.
I asked, no, I asked for some on project approval. Yes, I did.
Yeah, I do.
Yes, I did.
Ah, they do a call by, no, they.
And I'm surprised, you know, what it can.
Since we don't have a paperwork, I don't have a way to call them now. The other ones, I mean, I didn't know it was.
Current has a website and there's a, you know, there's a person there that we could, you know, contact. And again, some of these, and I'm just speculating, some of them could have been sent and maybe somehow got lost in the shuffle. You know, we give them a deadline, this year was October 28th. But by the same token, we have to cut a little slack because things happen.
Okay, that's no problem. I can re-contact Valley Cares, I'll look up the current and reach out to them. The Vermont Rural, Vermont Rural Fire Protection Program, which are the high fire hydrants. In the past, we haven't done that, and then we did last year because everything was on Australian ballot. But I guess we can find that their phone number as well. And Wyndham County Humane Society, this Project Feed the Thousands.
Wasn't that something where we, that we use the Townsend Food Shelf that we set the money to them?
Yeah, for many years, we, we made a donation that essentially went to the Townsend Food Shelf. But several years ago, we stopped getting the request for donation anymore because they don't, they started handling their money differently. So we haven't actually gotten a request for Townsend Food Shelf or Project Feed the Thousands in several years. So that doesn't seem unusual.
All right, so not to worry about.
So I'm sorry, so Wyndham County Humane Society, have you?
They email, I talked to Annie today, she apologized, she sent it to my email.
Yeah, okay, okay, so sorry, so that's 500 again?
500, yes.
Okay.
Some of these requests that are almost doubled, I think it would be prudent to take a second look at those.
Can I say something first? My two concerns. The first one is kind of one that I never used, but it's kind of close to my heart because I was thinking if I donated my entire library to them, that's the more free library, but they raised the rate from 300 to 700. Is there any kind of an explanation to that, to that increase? I know that they, I believe that they're getting funding or something to build a building.
We just got a paper that today or yesterday.
And I asked them when I went and got my cat last week, and they said, yes, we're going to be having a building. So maybe you can clarify what I'm just saying.
It says, our increased services, not limited, increased adult and youth programming, new furnace, and inclusive at-home use of library services for people unable to get to our facility have all been acquired based on community requests. Library uses has increased annually for the past five years. That's the reason that they gave for the increase.
Oh, I'm sorry, confused, I apologize. I was thinking of the freaking, I got myself confused every time. Finish what you're saying.
So that's it, more for your library request for $700 for fiscal year 2022, adding that their services includes increased adult and youth programming, new furnace, and an inclusive at-home use of library services for people unable to get to our facilities have been increasing their costs. So that's why they went from 300 to 400.
I was getting confused with.
From 300 to 700.
700.
Well, I can see the library, which is certainly impacts the town of Brookline. The one that troubles me is that Southend.
Oh, just like it is.
And, you know, they're asking $1,500. They're offering a $20,000 first prize for a business idea. Yeah, I have the posters they just sent us.
Can somebody explain to me, I know they've been on.
This is the lady who came to our meeting.
Did I miss something? Do they have a great impact on this community? Do they have any impact on this community? Explain that to me, because we're giving them 15, and this is approved by the town voters.
Last year.
Last year, Australian ballot for that kind of money. We never did that before, we're all exposed. But whatever, that doesn't answer my question. Maybe Stan seems like he was getting ready to answer. How is it impacting Brookline? To inquire in the room.
Well, I'm trying to find.
And we're spending 15, $1,590. And as you said, our total appropriations were 8,500, and 1,500 is that. That's a lot of free money.
Okay, so Sevens is the Barrow Development Credit Federation, Advancing Southern Vermont. It is.
I think it's got a poster.
Okay. And.
Basically, it almost seems there's some redundancy, I think, between the Wyndham Regional Commission and some of these other commissions that are all, you know, offering different things, but almost the same thing, if you understand what I'm saying.
So can I, can I ask a question? And I, while I don't, well, let me start by saying, I don't necessarily see what the huge impact of this organization might be to the town of Brookline, but the town voters voted overwhelmingly last year to give an appropriation of this same amount to this organization. So while I understand we might want to delve into what this organization does and what their impact is, then we're going to do that for all of the other organizations that the voters approved last year also, right? We're going to go through each of them?
You have a point, David, or we can just make a separate article. I represent some of the others.
Well, you gotta either do all or none.
Well, I, I think, I mean, people don't have to feel this way, but my feeling is, at this point, we treat it the same way we do all of the other recurring appropriations. So if, if we want to warn this one separately, we warn them all separately, which we could do. There's no reason we couldn't do that in the context of a town meeting, and they all get voted up or down one by one. It slows things down, but whatever.
Dave, do you remember what we did Sevens back in 2019, Brian?
We didn't.
In 2019, nothing. Last year was the first year.
Okay, I got my answer. Maybe if they're above a certain dollar amount, you could vote them. See if it's benefiting.
Well, it's a population of 530, where they ask for $3 per person to contribute to this. And, you know, they are business assisting, they assist businesses. They train workforce people, they I think there's actually a course I'm going to take on grant writing that they're offering. So.
Well, I think, I think just the way they've approved the last couple of years, I think that if they approved it last year, they would approve it this year.
Well, that was the first year that they approved.
Right.
And the year before, the Select Board, I think, elected not to have it, or it was a separate line up where it was defeated.
And don't forget.
No, it was, we never, as a board, we never put it forward to the voters until last year.
Right, okay.
In the time that I've been on the board, anyway.
Yep. And unlike what we've done in previous years, these things aren't discussed individually in a, in a Zoom, in an Australian ballot situation.
No.
So, you know, they're just voting.
Is that one year that everything had to be?
Right, all right, so I think what I'm hearing from everyone is that we will look to place on the ballot in a group the appropriation requests as written. I will reach out to the Leland and Gray, I'll reach out to the current, Valley Cares.
And what about that Project Feed the Thousands? Because I thought, unless, I thought one of the requirements for approving appropriations is we had to have a request from them and an amount from them for us to approve or not approve. It doesn't look like we got a request at all, and there's no amount for Project Feed the Thousands.
Right, this is what came in for Project Feed the Thousands.
Oh, okay.
It's just a letter that came within the window of appropriations.
Okay, but there's no, just, so they did request just no amount.
It's just a general letter.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I haven't seen this specific letter, but I believe, I mean, I think it's a fundraising letter that they send out to all kinds of people. That doesn't qualify as an appropriation request. I mean, every, every request that we get for money from an organization before October 31st doesn't qualify as an appropriation request. So, I mean, I don't think we need to worry about that one. Can I ask a question about Winston Proudy, though? So we didn't get any request of any kind from the Winston Proudy Center, which is another one, which was a new appropriation last year that was approved.
I don't see, is that the Youth Services?
No.
It's called Winston Proudy. It's not on this appropriations checklist that I got, which is, it is the Check Warrant Report 2207, dated 8/18/21, which were the appropriations paid out. And remember, we amended this to add $90 because the Sevens appropriation was written as $1,500 even, and it was 1,590. There is no Will, Mr.
Winston Proudy.
Winston Proudy on here. Want to take a look? No, I mean, I, my brain skips sometimes, and at this time of day, it skips.
Oh, I'm sure you're the Australia, okay, please give it us.
Okay, so then that means we probably never paid these people the appropriation that we voted at town meeting?
No, it's on this, and the appropriations, you had noted when we were, when you added, it was added up, that it was $90 short, and you saw that it was from the it was from the SEFCA Sevens appropriation. But this was all, you had added it up at the meeting online, and you were the one that saw this deficiency in one check. And Winston Proudy, I don't know.
So.
So it's in your, it's in the book, it's in the, was voted on?
Yeah.
Australian ballot?
I mean, I'll look at my book.
Oh, yeah, I remember too.
So I'm going to say something that I don't mean to be disrespectful to anyone, or. Oh, wait, actually, hang on. Did we not vote Winston Proudy last year?
I thought so.
I don't know, well, yeah.
No, it was definitely a year before, but I don't remember it was.
Maybe it was, maybe it was two years ago. I thought it was last year. No, you're, no, it was two years ago.
This is real.
Two years ago was Winston Proudy. And based on what I'm seeing, we never got an appropriations request last year for Winston Proudy. So it wasn't, it shouldn't have been listed in. So it wasn't, it shouldn't have been listed in what we would have paid earlier this year.
Right, so it's not, and it wasn't.
Right.
Okay, sorry, I, I thought you were just saying that it was, and that we had the ninety dollar discrepancy of, I don't know what you're looking at that you're referring to, but.
I'm looking at what they sent you today in the, in the email, and I, I'm saying that item number ten, Sevens, requested last year one thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. When we did the appropriations and the, uh, when the checks for appropriations went out this August for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two appropriations, the check was for one thousand five hundred dollars. You corrected it and said, there's ninety dollars missing. The voters approved one thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. And so this, this was, um, amended.
Okay, but that list did not include Winston Proudty at all. Sorry, I, I think I misunderstood what you were saying about whatever it was you were looking at, is that it included Winston Proudty. Okay, so Winston Proudty must not have ever sent us a request and didn't send us a request again, so they're off. Okay, all right. Sorry.
Across three counties, foundation, Greenup Vermont, Brown Works Collaborative, Historical Society of Wyndham County, Leland and Gray Foundation, I'm gonna contact Stephen Meyer. Moore Free Library went up four hundred dollars. Senior Solutions went up fifty dollars. SEVCA, Seveds, Southern Vermont Writing, Therapeutic Writing, the Current, I'm gonna contact. Valley Care is, I'll contact again. Vermont Association for the Blowing is there. Vermont Rural Fire Protection Program, I'll contact them. Vermont Family Network, we've got. Visiting Nurses, we've got. Vermont Center for Independent Living, we have. Our West River Watershed Alliance, we have. Wyndham County Community Society, we have for a request for an addition for five hundred dollars. Women's Freedom Center is the same, and Youth Services is the same. We have one additional request for five hundred dollars from the Gathering Place in Brownborough. So, um, I will contact these others. Um, so we, you want me to put this on the agenda for December first? Give you the update?
Sounds like that's appropriate.
Okay, we will do that. Put this in here for now. All right, where are we at? Okay. Now we're good. I was so surprised we were ahead of December forty-five. We're right on schedule now. All right. That's your review. All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Tanza, you are on again.
Yes, uh, as I was saying before, uh, things are about the same in the office. It's been very busy. Uh, between FEMA, between people asking a lot of questions about their taxes, because Tax Collection Day was November sixteenth. Um, so things are just about as usual, busy, but under control.
And we got a new dog.
Congratulations.
Not us, no. No, we had a new dog registered.
Oh, 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 oh.
No.
I'd be surprised if I got a dog.
Is that Charlie?
I got a new dog.
As I come. No, he's not holding up.
All right, I'm gonna move on to, um, Select Board. We already did the appointment of Donald Domain for the alternate TV fibers. Um, the Remac appointment, uh, I did not get an appointment for that, and I did attend the meeting last night, which was online. Um, I will have to say that it was not a very interesting, not a very good meeting. Pretty much, they talked about how to finance and sign up for grants to buy fire engines and ambulances and, and air breathing equipment. So I will attend the four meetings. Uh, they did suggest that I contact New Thing, New Brook Fire Department, because we do pay them mutual aid funding, and they should be able to appoint a fire emergency worker as the proxy for the town of Brookline. However, New Brook did not have anyone there representing themselves last night. New Thing did not have anyone online last night. Um, it was a very late crew. So this is, this, this program, um, roundtable is, uh, by, was legislated to be, uh, required two people to, um, from each town, one representative like myself and one EMS or emergency worker service. So it's up in the air. Anyway, so that, that was done. I will tell you, um, as far as what I'm doing here, I did sign up for a workshop um, on December thirteenth and fourteenth, from twelve thirty to four thirty, for a local emergency management director course, and that's through Wyndham Regional. Um, it got, I think Stan, you and I did this a couple of years ago in order to sign our local emergency plan and have to do that. So this is a, uh, an update on that. I registered for another course on November twenty-second, which is Transportation Workshop, Workforce Development and Technology. Pretty much, it is, um, a program for learning, uh, safety countermeasures, um, that are, the towns are responsible for. It's a webinar, it's free, and, um, I secured my spot, so I'm gonna attend that. It's a, oh, I think it's an hour, an hour or two long. It deals with, uh, Federal Highway Administration's environmental excellence work. Um, I did sign up for a grant writing course being offered through the Seveds program. To pay on grant writing, and that's the countermeasures. And I signed up for a webinar on November thirtieth, which is the day before our highway fund, and it's on developing proper highway budgets, making sure that you are, uh, uh, understanding that budgets for highways need to have a wide, uh, a wide view, and you need to have some basics, and I thought that that would be helpful. Um, anybody else can sign up for it as well. If you'd like, I can send it along. It's run by the New York State LTAP Center. So, but that's on highway budgeting. And the other thing I wanted to say that I did, uh, Dustin Lee has contacted me again regarding the Wi-Fi hotspot in Brookline. Uh, in the next month or two, he'll be coming through, um, he'll, they'll be coming up and setting up a date to come and do an install of our equipment. Uh, he asked if he could mail or ship the equipment directly to, to us, and, uh, I gave him our PO address and our, our UPS address as well. So, um, and this is a program from Nationwide Disaster Response, and it deals with, um, getting the town a hotspot. Um, the only other thing that I have here, I have an Act one sixty-six inventory that has to be done by November twenty-ninth. Um, I think I can probably do this. I'm gonna be calling New Brook anyway, so I'm gonna ask them for some information for the Act sixty-six that we have to comply with. Um, today, uh, Larson Electric was here and did the electrical upgrades and generator hookups for our town, and I think that's all I have to talk about on my, uh, Select Board Chair.
Sorry, what was the, uh, Act sixty-six deadline?
November twenty-ninth.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so next, last, and not least, Special Budget Meeting Wednesday, December eighth, two thousand twenty-one. I have it, but I'm going to ask Archie Clark to attend and to review over the materials. Um, so make sure everybody takes a look at the uh, data that was provided by, uh, the Treasury Department earlier this month. Any other questions for me?
Just wanna know what you're gonna do in your spare time.
I don't know. All right, uh, Bruce, Town Building Commissioner report.
Okay, um, might have heard when I came in. I, I actually saw, the town office actually saw them starting this morning on the electrical, two guys, real nice. Nice to have somebody in our, in our camp that does electrical work. And we discussed a little bit about it, about the, they already knew about it, 'cause you're the mayor of the rest of the, of the issue of the mice fighting the wires. Then when I came back later after I'd gone to Suzie's, I stopped in, and they were still here. Actually dropped off a, a bill that I created, um, to pay back. And they were still here. A one guy was still here, and he explained, showed me what he did. Showed me the junction boxes and the wiring that he did, and the wire. He actually basically taped the wire over to that second, and he found a bare opening. And he actually did some wire changes over here with junction boxes. And he said, it was always all the way up. I mean, it was not in good shape. So they straightened that all.
Fantastic.
So that's it for them. Um, then, um.
The mouse got fried.
I'm sorry?
And the mouse got fried.
Oh, mouse electrochuted themselves. So when they were chewing on the wires, he found an electrochuted mouse. And, but he did correct it, and he did take pictures before and after, so without that.
Sorry, Glenn, it's not edible. He's kinda. So anyway, on to my second bigger building. Suzie's. We've had some issues in the last two weeks with the heat in the place. And it started off with not heating in one spot, but heating in another spot, but not getting a blow-by-blow. The very day after, I finalized all the information with COVID, COVID, I called them up for a trouble call. Let me tell you, I enjoy doing that. But Tucker was great. We had a nice conversation. He sent somebody over within hours. And basically, what occurred was, uh, the system was extremely full of water there. Uh, at that one time, there was no parts expended. It was just a man. Sean was the guy's name. Spent over two hours leading the system. We're back. Everything was looking fine. Very next day, we had an issue. It came right back again. Did some more. And that was a week ago. Then I got an email this morning that they had no heat in the old building. So they sent out, got rid of Chuck this time. And he was there over two hours, leading the system.
Is that expansion tank, uh, the expansion tank that's.
That's new of last December.
Cause that makes me think the, in fact, that the expansion's.
Okay, I'll remember that. I don't know. It was, it did, brought up, this is what, this is what Chuck said from COVID, COVID. He said, we're a heating company, this, we were, uh, principally do heating. He said, what you need, and I'll explain quickly. What you really need to do is get a plumber in here. In fact, I mentioned it to Scott Bobin, who was telling me we're having a problem, and I was calling him, you know, it was an eating issue. And, and so, anyway, um, what the, what Chuck's, I actually came in from going down to work out and coming home from Brownarborough, and he was, I was coming to check to see how everything was, and he was still, he was just leaving. So anyway, he explained to me that he's had similar instances like this before, and the water in the system is cyclical, one complete loop. And on the return cycle of the, of the system, there's a couple of valves that he has objection to, they should be there, because they could pull negative air out of the air and, and, and actually introduce air into the system. Michelle over there actually made a good point. She said, why all of a sudden we having this problem? So something's happening, and could be expansion tank, which is brand new last year.
Well, that bladder could have failed, you know, and it's, it's.
Yeah, anything's possible. I was, yeah, I called Scott Bobin. I haven't got his box back yet. But it also could be the two things that he explained, which were those valves. And he says he's done this before. He's taken those valves out, and the problem went away.
That's good.
But you should see, he was two, over two hours today taking air out of it a week later. So he said it was, he thought it was either that or a little more remotely, that sweat soldering that has now thirty years older more, and that system could develop pinholes, and that could, and that could interject air into the system as well. So I called him out, and again, because he mentioned it to me before we started two, two hours previous. And he said, less likely, more the valves, but you really need to contact a plumber and, and, and get him in on it, and, and see what happens from there, because that's really more their expertise. So at the end of, when I got home, I called Scott Bobin, who made me first history term phone call. Um, and I'm trying to avoid major expenses with this, but I've had three visits from him, and I don't know what that bill's gonna be. Uh, but there's been, it's the only part that's, that's been brought into the situation is one thing that's broken. Other than that, it's all labor, so let's see. And I'll talk to Scott probably tomorrow morning, too, he has to.
Okay, perfect.
And that's it.
All right. Okay, so next, it's gonna, versus E, I want you to talk about your thing, your, uh, report to the roundtable. Um, Road Supervisor, that's on part E there. Uh, Mark, you just wanna quick summarize what we've been doing, and then any things you finished and things that you're gonna do.
Okay, uh, basically, I've been, uh, checking roads after heavy rains, making sure culverts are all working, moving some road debris that falls into the road. Um, we also, uh, I worked for a couple hours with Dave to finish up some state of work on the grant we did on Carter Road. Also finished up state of work, um, on the other grant, it's done, Putnam Mountain. Also have been, uh, working with and under Bruce's guidance on some of the town buildings, the school daycare. We spent some hours, uh, doing some maintenance. And started, uh, doing some painting here at the town office. Um, and then we started the program with our FEMA representative for, uh, we're gonna be meeting, um, on Friday, uh, as needed till we're done. And we've been driving around, um, guy has joined, uh, the team when, uh, using the town's laptop to GPS of the damaged locations of the flood, and also DOT. Is helping with all paperwork. We're identifying where the flood damage took place and then doing measuring, uh, putting all the numbers together in the the form that FEMA requires from us, which is quite complex.
Yes.
Um, so that's taking, you know, it's gonna take some hours to, uh, complete, and we do have a very nice, uh, representative to work with. And basically, that's it. Just, uh, going site to site. We still have half the town left to, uh, to plug in GPS, uh, numbers and measure the repairs and compare them with, uh, all of our main indirects and that's, that's it for now.
All right, very good. Uh, Stan?
What am I talking about?
Oh, Stan, you completed the Preservation Trust.
Oh.
People were, and I just wanted to thank you again for, for doing that. Um, and I guess we're all, you might wanna just tell them about the switch in names.
Yeah.
That, that happens.
Yeah.
I, I, I look at that name, because I will feel a lot more than I.
Thank you so much for that email. I, I will, I sent everyone a copy of the report that I sent along to the Preservation Trust of Vermont.
Thanks so much.
And unfortunately, I don't know why Mr. Stacks's first name stuck in my mind as William
That's his brother.
instead of Mike.
Okay.
But I need to advise, uh, PBT, Lisa, uh, Ryan, that I, I made a mistake on the name. So if I can verbally acknowledge my mistake to yourselves, not waste your time reading something where one name is changed, I, uh, uh, I apologize for the error, and I will correct it tomorrow, Lisa. Although she's not in the office, she won't be there till Friday. Uh, so thank you for giving that and pointing that out. I, I, after I saw that, I said, oh, my God.
I, I didn't know that I'd spin it over, because I know Bill, yeah.
Please hit me right down, will you?
No.
I believe there's three Williams statues in the venue.
I think you're right.
He thinks it's father, Bill, his brother, and his son. It's just four. Just four, there's four statues.
Oh, that's, that's productive.
The yours is close.
I have a total number of how many.
I was gonna name my cat Bruce.
Alright.
George White, fun to have with that.
About George. Yeah. I, 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 at a moment eleven, my, my brother-in-law was friends with a state trooper in Massachusetts. My brother-in-law is a state trooper. And he lived in Worcester, they have five boys and the name of each of them is George, the first name. I don't know how to get it.
Sounds like George Foreman.
George, George, George.
George, George, George.
Well.
I don't know. They may have simplified things.
Man, I lost my check, there's some silly reason there. But we're pretty much at a point where we're doing.
Communications.
Is that where we're at?
Yes, email, regular mail.
I could be on time for reaching them.
Okay, um, well, the emails have been coming from, from FEMA, that, that's okay. Uh, there haven't been other, other emails, you just basically need workshops and informative things. Um, nothing, no emails from communications from townspeople. Um, written mail, it looks here that, um, Wyndham County Sheriff has sent a notice that their rates have gone, is far now forty-eight dollars and fifty cents an hour for contracts of at least two thousand hours, which is not us. And sixty dollars per hour for anything less than two thousand hours, we don't contract with them anyway at this time. So, um, we could, I'll check this off and return it. There's also, um, in the town wall, I'm borrowing it right now, it's, uh, the BLTC news. It's probably on there online as well. It's their All Things ARPA magazine or All Things ARPA, ARPA for this year. And it also covers some of the town fair informations. So, uh, be good, good reading for, uh, anybody who'd like to catch up on that. And what's after that?
Oh, payrolls.
Payrolls, okay.
Payrolls and then the most could be stronger.
Payroll warrant. Let's see if I do this right. I'd like to make a motion to approve payroll warrant twenty, twenty-two dash nineteen dated November tenth, two thousand twenty-one in the amount of two thousand eighty-two dollars and fourteen cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan. Any discussion? I do have to say that I was asked this payroll warrant, since most of it is all automatic deposit. Everybody's received their money. I did sign it, but I'll pass it around for everyone else. Um, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant twenty twenty-two dash nineteen dated eleven ten twenty-one in the amount of two thousand eighty-two dollars and fourteen cents, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. I'd like to make a motion that we approve a payroll warrant, a accounts payable check warrant number twenty, twenty-two dash twenty dated November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one in the amount of four thousand two hundred fourteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan. Any discussion?
I'll just note that I'm gonna abstain because it wasn't emailed, so I haven't seen it. So, that's fine. You have payable warrant?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got one.
I did.
Today?
Oh.
No, Monday.
How is it, how was it emailed Monday if it's dated today?
She did it on, she did it on the fifteenth because the office was pretty much closed today because of the electric, electricians were working. So the checks are here, she did come in on Monday and work on it, the fifteenth.
Okay, well.
And she emailed it around one, one fifteen or so.
So what he's saying is, is the date to.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, it's fine, I mean, I would go ahead with it, I'll, I'll still abstain because I still haven't seen it. Whether I lost it or not, I guess.
Thank you. Alright, all those in favor of approving accounts payable warrant twenty twenty-two dash twenty dated eleven seventeen twenty-one in the amount of four thousand two hundred fourteen dollars and thirty-eight cents, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any extensions?
Yes, all abstain.
One from David, David Jones. Okay, the, uh, motion passes with one extension. Thank you, that was such a sign, yes, one. Anybody have a blue pen? Or a black pen, I don't care.
Yeah, a black.
Okay, so next, I believe we set the agenda?
Correct.
Okay, I have for our December first meeting to vote the appropriations to, uh, approve the job description. Um, and anything else that might come before this board at that time? Correct? I don't have anything else per se, but I'll, so we'll fill it out. Okay, so I'll have those two items and then the other items that may come with that. Uh, so next is the adjournment of the meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to make.
There's something about set the agenda for special budget meeting?
Okay, the special budget meeting, which is December eighth. Uh, we can actually set at the December first meeting in case we have any changes.
Yeah.
But December eighth meeting is basically gonna be highway. And, and any of, and any budgeting that we did not do.
Which, is that including salaries and, uh?
Which would be, uh, salaries and some of the other information that you had gotten that we left open.
Yeah.
If we have to carry over to another meeting, we will. But, uh, some, some of it might be in executive session. Okay, oh, and, um, on the December first meeting, we will also review the lease for, uh, Suzie's Little Peanuts that we should have received in the mail today as well.
Email, it's email.
Okay, anything else, what's next, and then now to adjourn?
Uh, set a agenda, the budget, uh, meeting number two on December eighth, okay, adjourn the meeting.
Okay, make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting. We, you have a second day, second day by Bruce. Any, uh, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjourned this evening's meeting, uh, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, I can adjourn the meeting, it is eight twelve. Thank you very much, I'll stop the recording.